Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item tonight on our agenda is the consent calendar, and I do have a request. Okay. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us this evening. The first item on our agenda is the consent calendar. I do have a request from a member of the public to speak on one of the items, so I will pull item 3D for a separate vote. Do I have a motion on the other three items?
I want to pull, I have one correction of the minutes.
Okay. So you want to just make that correction, then? We'll just do it all at once after we hear our public speaker.
So the only correction is on the minutes on page 3, item 10A, the Planning Commission nomination. So it has for each of our individual comments that each of us nominated a specific member. We didn't nominate, we expressed support, and then there was an actual motion to nominate a person. So if we can change the, each five lines where it says council member so-and-so nominated to say, "express support."
Right. I think that's a clarification. Okay. Any objections to that clarification of the minutes? Hearing none. Okay. Then I'm going to invite Irina Liskovich to come forward and speak on item 3D.
Hello, good evening. I basically didn't know I was the only one speaker. The only thing, I want a clarification. I did get a phone call from the city council saying that the appeals will be heard on the 4th of February at 7:00 PM. Is that still on the, it's still the same, or it has to be voted today if the date should change? Is that set in stone?
Our intent is to approve that date tonight.
Tonight. Okay, that's all I'm interested in right now.
You'll be in town?
That's what I'm try, yeah, I will be in town, so that's what I'm trying to.
That's good to know. We're hoping all the appellants will be available that evening.
Okay, thank you. That's the only thing I wanted to confirm.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments on any of the other items, or do I have a motion for approval?
I'll move to approve with the corrections to the minutes as noted.
A second.
I have a motion by Catalano, a second by Wolf. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that carries unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is always a fun one. It is recognition and presentations, and this evening, we have five students who we are going to recognize for the Do the Right Thing program, and this month's recognition for December and November is kindness appropriate for the holiday season, don't you think? So, I'm going to come forward, and I'm going to ask our one representative of Mount Diablo Elementary, Elise Roberts, to come forward. Hi, Elise, and this is her teacher. Wonderful. Why don't you stand and look that way? And you can hold your certificate. Look at that. It's got your name right there. You need to turn it around so you can show everybody. Okay? Mommy's getting a picture right now, but she's going to get another one of the whole group in a bit. So I'm going to ask her teacher to tell us why she nominated. Elise.
Elise is one of the kindest students I know. She is always ready to lend a helping hand to another student. She has true concern and consideration of others. Almost daily, I find Elise helping a fellow student. She has already completed her work, and instead of choosing to play, she consistently chooses to help. She's an amazing sensitivity to not telling another student the answer, but rather essentially reteach them the entire lesson in a special way that only another kid could do. This generosity is what makes her a truly special little girl.
Wonderful. Congratulations, Elise. Can you shake my hand? Congratulations. We're going to ask you to take a seat for just a minute, and when we finish with all the other students, we'll have you all come back up for one group picture. And can I have Patty Bannister come up, please, for the Diablo View Middle School presentations? And Grace Dieselhorst? And Lillian Strumpf? Dieselhorst? De-Selhorst. Okay. It's a lot of letters. Okay. There you go. You want to hand those to each of the girls? Thank you.
All right. So I'll start with Lily. So we were very fortunate. Lily is new to Diablo View this year. She came out from Sequoia. So she has a real standout in just a short time. And I asked the teachers a little bit about Lily, and she says, when we're talking about kindness, that she's always there for her friends, she's extremely helpful, that teachers really recognize that she's extremely polite, she's learned well from her parents, and she always, which is nice for teachers to hear, she'll greet them in the morning, and then she thanks them at the end of class. So that's a nice thing. And another thing about Lily that I hear a lot about is she's an excellent swimmer. So, well, remember Lily's name, that she was here at city council. She's an excellent swimmer, and she's getting ready to go to the Olympic Training Camp for a few days. So she's been selected to go there. So congratulations.
Thank you so much.
So Grace, Grace is a delight, and I talk, I see Grace all the time. She's always, she's bubbly, she's happy, she's smiling. I think she must take a happy pill in the morning, because she's just a delightful young lady. She was an easy pick for kindness, and some of the words that the teachers told me to describe her is, besides kind, she's joyful, positive attitude, is really helpful and extremely kind to her friends, and she's just, what else did they say? Well, one of them described her as bubbly, and there for her friends. And another teacher told me that she kind of uplifts the mood in the class. She's such a friendly girl. And the one thing that I like about Grace is she's not afraid to be herself. She kind of does her things, and she's proud of it. So congratulations.
We'll have you come back up in just a minute for a group picture for the newspaper. And so who do we have here from Clayton Valley Charter? Wonderful. Come on up. We have Kyle Olendorf-Holly and Lucas Kalika. Is that right? Come on up, guys. Congratulations.
All right, good evening. My name is Allison Pettit, and I am our Director of Discipline, Guidance, and Attendance at Clayton Valley. So these are two of our office, our TAs, and our clerical staff, as soon as they heard about the word of kindness, they like barged into my office and said, "It has to be, it has to be them." They are a representation of our school at the fullest. They are kind, and respectful, and responsible. We get compliments a lot from our staff and our parents as well, anybody who interacts with them in the office. So there is a huge responsibility that they each carry. And so, like I said, there's a group of about 12 that barged into my office and said, "It had to be them." So it was hands down them. So these are our two from Clayton Valley. Thank you.
Okay. Can I get the other students to come up, please? No, students stay here. Tall ones in the back. Come on over here so we get the stuff in the middle here. Come on right over here in the middle. Okay. And you, my dear, are going to come right here in front of all these tall people, because they can all see over you. Does that work, Tamara?
Yeah, it works. There we go. Everybody, big breath, and let it out in a big smile. Perfect.
Everybody got them? All right. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you so much.
I saw she cuts us out, but I've seen my face in the back.
That's always a fun part of our council meeting, to get to recognize the youth in our community who are doing a great job of giving back. So the next item on our agenda is a proclamation recognizing the importance of, and commitment to renewable energy, and I am told we do not have anyone here to receive it. So let me just give you the gist of this. And it talks about how California is the first in the nation for solar energy production, and fourth in the nation for wind power capacity, producing enough electricity to power nearly eight million homes, which is pretty impressive. We are home to 106 wind farms, 13 wind-related manufacturing facilities, and 2,767 solar-related companies. And lots of us have solar on our homes. So this is attracting nearly $15 billion in investment to date to our state, and it's spurring critical investments in communities that fund manufacturing jobs, education programs, and local economic development programs. So we are proclaiming that City of Clayton recognizes the importance of and is committed to renewable energy, and we encourage Californians to learn more about the benefits of wind and solar energy in our community, and to celebrate California's leadership in renewable energy production. So we will send that off to the appropriate folks tomorrow. Next on the agenda, we have reports, and we have a report from Peter Cloven for our Planning Commission.
Good evening, Mayor Pierce, Vice Mayor Juan, and city council members. It was a pleasure to have a normal Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, January 14th, after two barn burners. We were first able to welcome our new Planning Commissioner Terry Denslow into our midst, and from the detail, nitty-gritty, which he got into the item on the agenda, it'll be a welcome addition. We did have a couple modifications to the minutes that we were able to put in with Milan, and then we got on to our public hearing, which was item number ENVO-108, DPO-108, MAP-0209, the Development Plan for the Vesting Tentative MAP Extensions for Creekside Terrence Mixed Use Project. Obviously, that's the project over there next to the creek where we just demolished the two older buildings. Clearly, those were a safety hazard. We actually went over a quite lengthy discussion, even though I've been through this discussion three times previously with every year, having Terry on board for the first time, and Frank really getting into the nitty-gritty of what has happened historically. It was a good conversation. We talked about some of the city costs that were associated with the demolition, whether the property is being actively marketed, and whether there's any historic interest in the property from a development standpoint. In the end, we just brought it to a motion to approve it with the entitlements as-is. There was a discussion whether the entitlements had value or not. As it was, a motion was made, and seconded, we voted, and it ended up being four to one with Commissioner Gavida being the lone dissenting vote to pass it. There was no other items on the agenda, and we happily adjourned after an hour. Are there any questions for you, from y'all?
Any questions for Peter?
Yeah, I, we haven't spoke since your last series of meetings. I just wanted to recognize that I think you did a fantastic job during the hearings that you had in the past, so I didn't have a chance to reach out to you.
Thanks, Jeff. I appreciate that.
It was a tough meeting to chair, and you did a well, a very good job, so thank you. Okay? Any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
The Trails and Landscaping Committee did not meet this period. Reports from city manager and staff.
Thank you, mayor and council. Just to have a few announcements. So the deadline for applications for the TLC, we had zero, zero people apply, so I would invite all residents and any interested parties to please apply to the Trails and Landscape Committee. It'll be a great opportunity. Actually, this week, I had the opportunity to have a meeting on the trails and walk the trails, and little by little, just really getting to see the beauty of the trails with Mount Diablo, and I've never seen a trail so peaceful, surrounded by nature. And it was great to know that there's a, there's a committee out there that actually helps to, to program the funds to help keep those trails fantastic and neat and clean. So that's great. So we have four positions open, so please apply for those positions. Second announcement is, we still have the Finance Manager and Community Development Director position open. It'll close on January 31st, this, this next Friday. So if you're interested and have finance experience and community development background, we would love to have your application and resume. So please apply. Last but not least, we have an all-staff meeting this Friday, and the reason why I share that with everyone in the community is because it'll be between 9:00 to 11:00 AM this, this Friday, and City Hall will be closed. So if you come to City Hall and it's closed, we'll actually be here in Hoyer Hall having an all-staff meeting. So if you just, our patient, 11:01, City Hall will reopen, and it'll be great. So we just got some fantastic vision and goals to set out here with all staff, but staff will be there at 11:00 AM to reopen City Hall.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions of the city manager staff? Okay. Seeing none, we will go to city council reports, and we'll start down to my right with Jim Diaz.
Thank you. I had a few meetings over the past couple of weeks, and let me just briefly run through them. Had my first one-on-one meeting with our new city manager back on the 9th of January, and have since had another meeting with him today to kind of get briefed on some of the issues internally, as well as some of the council items that are on the agenda. On the 11th, I was honored to attend the Third Annual Sheriff's Posse Crab Feed. I tell you, that sheriff has more deals over there that, as you can get involved in for his posse and his cavalry. But it was a great, well-attended event, and a lot of good information that flowed. On the 14th, had a meeting with the, on the Committee for the 11th Annual Clayton Barbecue. That's coming up. And then finally, on the 16th, I attended as the designated alternate to the County Connection Board Meeting. And that was a very interesting meeting, by the way. A couple of things took place. One, the County Connection recognized the retirement of a 25-year-plus employee, which is something that they do at, as they occur. But more importantly, they mentioned a report that back, maybe about a week and a half, two weeks ago, there was a incident on the BART tracks between Pleasant Hill and Concord, which shut down that link. And so what do you do? Well, County Connection responded in spades, I want to tell you. They, this thing started at about 5:00 PM and lasted till 1:00 AM. They marshaled 25, excuse me, 29 buses, drivers, and all the support staff that needs to do that, and they transported 3,700 people from the Pleasant Hill station over to the Concord station, which is very important, because people were wanting to get home after coming home from work, from the city or wherever. And, but it was, the incident did not end until 2:15 in the morning. This individual unfortunately was an addict, and it took a while to remove him from the tracks and get that segment back open again. But I really want to commend the County Connection, Rick Ramisir, who's the general manager, and the rest of the staff over there for coming to the assistance of the general public. 29 buses, 3,700 people, in a period of 5:00 PM to 1:00 AM. That is very commendable. Thank you.
C W?
Okay. I spent a little time with some constituents, and got a chance to not only meet in person, but on the phone. One in particular being one of the resigning members of the Trails and Landscape Committee. I know we'll be talking about that, I'm sure, in the future, but some problems there within the Trails and Landscape Committee, trying to get people, get some attention to the Trails and Landscape Committee, and to give them a chance to have some real input in the city. So I think there's, there's a lot to be done there. I know that Vice Mayor Juan is going to be on that committee this year, and as our liaison, I'm sure things will improve. And I also got a chance to have lunch with our city manager. Got to, and also met him on the phone today, and the biggest thing I found out was Tomo Epaou in Tongan means city manager. So that's.
Okay.
That's it.
How did they know?
Very good. Tia?
I also met with the city manager, but no other official report, committee reports.
No, okay. Jeff?
He's a popular guy. I think, I think we talked a few times. I did, I did, oh, here. I did have the pleasure of speaking with our auditors in some detail about the report that we're going to have as one of the action items, so I'll leave it at that. It was a good conversation, just talking about, talking through this report.
Okay. Very good. I had several meetings. Met with the Administration and Projects Committee for the Country-Cost Transportation Authority, attended the mayor's conference in Pinole, and while Ikani is relatively new back to the northern part of California, he ran into a classmate who works for the city of Pinole, and it was a nice little reunion. It was, it was good to see old friends, so. Also attended a Association of Bay Area Governments and Metropolitan Transportation Commission joint committees. We meet, our legislative committees meet together, and our planning and admin committees meet together jointly to make sure we're staying in sync with each other. We don't always agree, but we do meet together for joint discussions. I also had a meeting with the representatives from the Clayton Valley Village, and they will be holding a large meeting soon. You will hear more about that through the media. Attended the full board meeting of the Country-Cost Transportation Authority, and attended the Association of Bay Area Governments Finance Committee and the Executive Board Meetings. So that was the last two weeks for me, and I don't believe we have any other reports on the agenda. Sorry?
One, one quick announcement.
Okay.
Just was informed that our live stream audio section of the feed tonight went down, so we will not be live streaming this evening. The audio and everything's working perfectly on the AV recording, and we will be taking a video of that with the audio and posting it to our website later this week. So I know the children were here, and I know parents would want to go back and look at the program with the certificate, so rest assured, we'll have something back up on the website for the meeting later this week.
Right. The recording is working, it's just the broadcast that is not. And we're a little limited in the internet capabilities. That's the restricting factor here. We've got actually dual companies, but sometimes there just doesn't have, we don't have enough oomph to get it out there, so. And we also have older equipment, and we hope to be doing something about that before very long, but we're working on it. But it will be posted probably sometime tomorrow. So thank you, Laura, for letting us know about that. The next item on the agenda is public comment. I do have one speaker card for public comment. If anyone else would like to speak on any items not listed on this evening's agenda, please fill out one of the blue cards and hand it to our city clerk, and we will call you up as well. The one card I do have is from Brian Bedell. I think you're on, nope, you were on 8B. Sorry. Never mind. You wrote it really small. So, okay, is there anyone that wishes to speak under public comment? Seeing none, we're done with public comment. We'll close that. We have no public hearings this evening. We do have two action items. The first one is our audited annual financial report for the City of Clayton for the fiscal year ended June 30th, and we will, you want to make the introduction, Ikani?
Yes, mayor, thank you. City council, what you have in front of you today is discussion and consideration to accept the audited annual financial report, City of Clayton with the, with the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. We have John Cropper here in the audience, partner at Cropper Accounting. Also Bryce Rojas, who will be presenting the audited, audited financials in front of you. With no further ado, I'll let Bryce take it away.
Good, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. It's not on. Is it on?
It's on.
It's on, okay. Great. Well, I'm the audit manager for the audit. I've been on this audit for a few years. John's been the partner, and I'm here to present you with the audited financial statements in a couple of letters. So as you may know, or may not know, as part of our audit, we issue an opinion that goes in the audited financial statements, and this year, we were able to issue a clean opinion, which is technically known as a modified, unmodified opinion, unmodified. And so that is good. That's what you want. That's what you're hoping for. And that's on page one of the financial statements. We also issue a letter on internal controls of financial reporting and compliance and other matters, and that's on page 121 of the report. And there is where we have recommendations on weaknesses or deficiencies that we noticed throughout the audit. We have some suggestions in there. And then, we also issued a letter that you should be, you should have there to the council that is pretty much a template letter, but there are a couple areas where we note the sensitive estimates that are in the financial statements, the estimates that were used in creating some of the numbers, and some of the estimates that we, that were sensitive and important to, to mention, related to pension, and also to OPEB. And then there is also an estimate on the cost of the bonds. And then some of the sensitive disclosures that we think are important for you to notice in the financial statements relate to the deferred pension, or not deferred, defined pension plan, benefit pension plan, and the OPEB plan. And then, there, up here, mentions a management letter, or a SAS 115 letter, but this year, we combined that in the letter at the end of the financial statement report, at the very end on page 121. And are there any questions? Well, I'll continue on, and then I'll answer questions at the end. And so here are some noteworthy items. The financial statements are split up into two parts. We have the statement of net position, well, the government-wide financial statements, which is the whole city, all the power, economic power of the city, and that's on page 16 and 17. That talks about, it's the balance sheet and the, the profit and loss statement, also known as the statement of activities. And some of the items that we want to point out are that the assets had about $50 million. Liabilities were just under $6 million, and that resulted in a net position of 45, almost $46 million. And what you care about is the unrestricted net position, and there's just under $3 million in your unrestricted net position at your, at June 30th, 2019. And then the other part of the financials is the fund-based financials, and those are, start on page 22. And the general fund, which is there on page 22, and assets were about $6.5 million. Liabilities were under half a million, and resulted in a fund balance of $5.7 million. This is an increase from the prior year of about $94,000. And within that fund balance, there's $5.3 million that's unassigned. It's not committed or assigned to any other, assigned to anything in particular. It's not committed or assigned to any other, assigned to anything in particular. And here is a slide depicting the profit and loss of the city during the year. That's on page 17. And compares 2019 to 2018. And revenues were about $7.7 million for the whole city. Expenses were just under $8 million, resulting in a combined decrease in net position of And then on the next page is, the next slide is the general fund comparison of profit and loss from 2019 to 2018. And in 2019, revenues were about 4.7 million. Expenditures were 4.6. And after transfers of 15,000, the change in the general fund, fund balance was 90, just under $94,000 for the year. And that is what I have for right now. Are there any questions that I can help you with?
Any questions? I know that Jeff, you had a chance to spend about an hour going over this with the city manager and the auditors. Do you have anything you want to add to the presentation?
It was riveting.
It probably was for you.
Auditing always is. Accounting is.
I, I just had one that I, I don't know if I missed this during, when I'm looking at the, the management letter on page 121, when I'm at paragraph four and paragraph five, am I missing something?
One, two, three, four.
The identification of material weaknesses. Third line down in paragraph four says, "We do not identify any deficiencies in structural that we consider to be material weaknesses." Last line in paragraph five says, "We consider the following deficiencies in structural control to be material weaknesses."
That is a good find, and...
Did I, am I, am I reading that correctly?
You are reading it correctly.
Good.
But we, we did identify some material weaknesses.
We should probably just strike one of the lines.
Yes, that is correct. We can, we can do that.
Sorry, I didn't catch that earlier.
No, that's something we should have caught.
That was it.
Can you expand upon the material weaknesses?
Yes. So, as you know, during the year, there's a lot of transition. We went from...
This is the expected one, but I think we need to make sure that everyone understands why.
Why? Okay, so...
Well, I think it'd be, it'd be illustrative if you identified what a material weakness is.
Exactly.
Okay.
What it constitutes, as well as a significant deficiency and the delineation between the two.
Right.
Okay. Material weaknesses, a significant deficiency is a deficiency that is in the internal controls of financial reporting that could lead to errors in the financial report if not caught. A material weakness is a step higher in that it's a weakness in internal controls where, if it's not caught, could lead to a material misstatement in the financial statements. And throughout the audit, there were some material journal entries that we had, which led to this finding a material weakness.
Okay.
And that related to the closing of the books. And because of the transition, there was a lot of institutional knowledge that was, that left with the, during the transition and is during the transition that's continuing, still going on. And so mostly had to do with the closing of the books that was going on. And as you know, there was fraud during the year that we caught. And so even though it wasn't a material amount, anytime there's fraud, it's a material weakness. And so we're suggest, we put it in, put in some suggestions on how to better handle or receive, receive, sorry, reporting of fraud to management. I'm sorry.
Okay. And just for the audience's sake, I think what you need to understand is our former finance manager moved on to a different job in June of last year, so over six months ago. And we've had an interim finance manager who has been valiantly working to conduct all of the closing of the books and everything for fiscal year 19. And it took a little longer than we had hoped, and there was a steep learning curve trying to figure out how the accounts were placed and how it had been done under the former management. And so it, it took a little while longer, and we did have a employee who's no longer with us who didn't use a credit card properly. So that now has been tracked down. It's been taken care of. Changes are in place for the management of that. It's, it's one of those things that happens, but we caught it. That's good. So, anything else you want to add?
No, I think that the comments provided in this letter offer a, a good starting point that we can take as a staff to address some of the issues going on. I think it's, it's likely going to take a substantial amount of time to develop some of these items, but I do think that these are good recommendations.
And we always get the one about we're such a small staff, we don't have the same checks and balances that some other bigger cities have. But that's just who we are. So when you only have, what, 24 employees and half of them are cops, you don't have a whole lot of people to run the show. So everybody's spread a little thin, but that's why we have auditors, and you help us out, and we're, we're getting through it. Any other questions of the auditors, please? Jim?
Yeah, just, just a comment that I want to commend our limited financial staff on that issue on the cards, the, the credit cards, because that, I come out of the private sector, and also I'm on the Finance Committee of the United Way of the Bay Area. And it is very simple to get around the approval, the correct approval process. And so therefore, it's, it's absolutely important and imperative that management takes a diligent effort to make sure that these little minor things that can creep up get addressed and get addressed quickly. And I want to commend our staff for, for identifying it and taking care of it. And hopefully with the, with your help and some good direction, we've got some procedures that are about to come in place that will address that to eliminate in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comment? Tia?
I have one comment. So in your management letter, you talked about the significant deficiencies, and the other one was unearned revenues.
Yes.
Can you elaborate a little bit what that is and what it means?
There's a lot of unearned revenues at the city, the deposits. And we just noticed that a lot of the deposits had been, were from a long time ago. And maybe through communications or inquiries with the staff, some of these projects might be closed. And so there's just money sitting there, and we're just suggesting that you should look into it and see if this money should be taken in as revenue, or is it's truly a deposit or deferred revenue.
So it's money that's sitting in a fund that maybe the fund has been closed? Is that what it means?
Projects have been closed.
Project, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
It could be, I mean, it could be a number of things.
Right. It varies, yeah.
I think that would largely stem from account balances not being timely reconciled and reviewed at a detailed level. So account reconciliation is probably one of the most fundamental activities that we can do to validate the balances. And that'll be an activity that our future finance director is probably going to be charged with in reviewing the account balances and doing the detailed rec that is part of the basic procedures that they should be doing. So I, it could be, I mean, deferred revenue, it could be just anything that you get that you hadn't yet earned. It could be a short-term or long-term, I think that...
Yeah. So I was going to continue. So I mean, your recommendation is just that, that we stay on top of those a little bit better and, and decide what the status is.
And maybe investigate, yes, investigate some of these older balances that have been there for quite a few years.
Okay. Very good. That's good to know. Other questions, comments? The action on this is to accept the audited annual financial report. Do we have a motion?
I so move.
Okay. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Wan and a second by Councilmember Wolf. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. That carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your being here. Thank you, John. Always good to see you. All right. The next item on our agenda is item 8B. And that is an item that was requested by Vice Mayor Wan, but I think we were all in agreement that it was a worthy discussion. So do you want to kick that off, or do you want me to just kick it over to, to Jeff?
Yeah, very briefly, I'll just kick it off. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor and, and Councilmember. This, this item that you have before you, just to let the public know, this is a future agenda item that Vice Mayor Wan brought up last council meeting. And so as a policy, when a future item is brought up by a council member, that council member in Clayton will talk and present about it. So just wanted to share that tidbit, and I'll turn over the time. Right, right now, the agenda item that you have, that City Council has in front of them is to discuss and consider opposing Senate Bill 50 regarding planning, zoning, and housing development incentives. With that said, Vice Mayor Wan.
Very good. I will turn it over to Jeff, and be aware that we do have two public comment cards here. So go ahead and introduce it, and we can then go to public comment, and then we'll discuss.
Sounds good. I did not prepare any detailed presentation, but I did think that we could, that this was an important matter that's currently in the legislature. In the prior year and in the year before, this bill and its predecessor were introduced but did not pass, and it's being reintroduced now. And it, due to Senate procedure, it has until the end of the month to come to a vote, or else I think the bill is dead, if I understand that correctly. And so I thought it would be important for us to discuss this and where, where the city stands. And if, obviously, I, I proposed the item as a, as an, as an one of opposition, so I'm pretty clearly signaling my, my thoughts on it. But the long and the short of it is, it, while it is a moving target because all bills get adjusted as they go through the process, the key provisions of this bill are that, a few things. It would allow essentially four-plexes across the vast majority of land within the state of California. If you are close to transit, it would upzone areas within a certain distance of transit. I believe it's a quarter mile from various, various frequencies or types of transit. And then if you are close to bus stops as well, that's one path to the upzoning. And by upzoning, I mean increasing both density, height, reducing parking, things like that. And so the other avenue to, that would trigger this upzoning are what's described within the bill as opportun, or sorry, opportunity-rich, I believe, is, they, they changed the name on me, so I don't, I don't recall off the top of my head. Either job-rich or opportunity-rich. And one is close to employment centers, and the other is high educational outcomes.
Resource-rich.
Resource-rich, okay. And so the intent of this is, has been stated that communities that are close to jobs or have higher educational outcomes should open up to higher zoning. And essentially, this is a further attempt by the state legislature to reduce local control and push the, the goal of dramatically increasing housing supply within the state. There's been a number of criticisms of this, some of which are that, you know, there are affordable housing components to these, but they don't kick in until you hit a certain number of units. So it would incentivize lower unit but higher-cost housing units. So it may or may not increase supply at lower income levels, as well as, you know, I think from both sides, some will say it doesn't go too far enough, and some will say it goes too far. I'm of the opinion that, you know, single-family zoning, especially here in Clayton, is something that the residents really value, and I do as well. And so to the extent that this bill essentially eliminates that, I think that's bad. And, you know, the, the, what's the, what's the organization that did the analysis? I forget. They came out with an oppose if, until amended position.
Oh, the California League of Cities.
Yes, sorry. Lost it. California League of Cities has come out with oppose unless amended position on the bill. Obviously, it's going to get changes within the next nine or 10 days. However, I, I don't, I mean, that's, they have to take, they try to thread the needle on still working as a lobbying organization. I don't really feel the need to do that. I, I would just say we should just oppose and, and tell, send a message that says this type of bill is, should, should not happen. So I, I would, I think that I, I clearly, California could do better with having more housing units. I do believe that those units should be focused on areas that are essentially producing jobs and to address the job-to-housing imbalance.
May I add just a couple of points to that?
By all means.
One of the other concerns raised by the League of Cities and indeed many of us at the Association of Bay Area Governments is that this bill, as, as Jeff said, would allow all single-family zoning to allow up to four units on each single-family lot. And that would be by right. It would not be something we could control. So if you live in a single-family lot right now, you could build three more units on that property. And the city would not be able to say no. Another piece of this legislation is that it does not actually define resource-rich or even job-rich. I think we all think we know what that looks like, but we don't know for sure that they wouldn't define something that's relatively low level of jobs to be job-rich. We don't know that.
Yeah. It would likely expand over time, I would guess.
It probably would, but we don't know what that means. And that's one of the flaws in this, this piece of language or piece of legislation. The other thing that's been discussed at the Association of Bay Area Governments in particular is that this allows what we're calling carve-outs for counties under 600,000 and for smaller cities, which means all of the four North Bay counties are off the hook from any of these regulations at all, which doesn't quite seem fair to some of us in, in regional government. So those are just a few of the issues. There are many issues with this piece of legislation where it is right now. I would just make one correction to a statement that's in the staff report, and that is, it, it talks about sensitive communities and getting special exemptions for those. And it talks about those communities being determined by councils of government in the Bay Area. That is the Association of Bay Area Governments. That is not a choice for the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. So just to clarify the, the jobs, the council of governments is the Association of Bay Area Governments and is probably the far more conservative of the two bodies. So that probably is...
All right.
Maybe helpful, maybe not, because sensitive communities is not really defined either.
Can I? I forgot.
Go right ahead.
So I did draft a letter, because the last time we had a discussion like this, you know, I didn't want to lose time, just because I know that this is, it's somewhat time-sensitive. Our city manager asked if I'd like to draft a letter or use the default one that the League of Cities provided. I elected to provide a draft letter, so if it's in the agenda packet. I did actually mention those things that you said, so I...
That's why I thought I'd better raise them.
One thing that, one other issue is the duplicative processes involved. So the, what it contemplates, what SB 50 in its current form contemplates is to have a parallel process that functions alongside of the current regional housing needs allocation process. So with regional housing needs allocation, RENA determines, I don't know if that's not the right word, but it, it's how we determine how many housing units that we must zone for. And then this SB 50 sits on top of it, and it says, well, you need to take this other process and zone for all these other additional units based on the criteria that are laid out here. And there isn't really a good discussion about how those two interact. If you satisfy one and not the other, it's going to be essentially the same staff doing all the work. And so it does create quite a bit of duplicative process, both at every locality, as well as at the agencies that are charged with reviewing and approving all these plans. And so, I mean, I would scrap both processes, but I don't, I don't think that's on the table at the moment, sorry.
[laughing]
So, yeah, so I, I did draft this letter. If, if we agree with it, that's great. If we don't, that's also fine.
Okay.
It's just a start, it's just a starting point of talking about it.
Exactly. So we'll just do clarifying comments and questions here, and then we're going to listen to public comment, and then we'll bring it back for discussion. To you.
So just a clarifying question. So I think for...
So, just a clarifying question. So, I think for the benefit of the public, it would have been helpful to have a copy of the SB 50 text in our packets. But, the outline that we have, the three-page, is that from any official publication or League publication, or is that?
I believe that is the League's language that they included in their communications.
Their outline?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't write that. That's from the League.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
The letter one is from me. And I actually put some names from the Senate Appropriations Committee, because I wrote it a long time ago, but it's no longer in Senate Appropriations, so that's not relevant.
Right.
No, it interestingly got taken out of appropriations by the Speaker.
Senate Pro Tem.
The Senate Pro Tem lifted it out of the, and that's where it stalled last time. Interesting. Any other questions? Okay, we will go to public comment. And now, Brian Bedell, and then following Brian will be Dan Hummer.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council members. I'm encouraged to hear the critical look that's being taken at this bill, and I just want to join in the chorus of asking for a letter of opposition to it. I think what needs to be done is, Clayton needs to join in the collective voice of over 35 municipalities throughout the state of California who have voiced and expressed opposition to this bill as currently written. In addition to those 35 municipalities, there have also been a number of other groups. The League of California Cities has been mentioned, as well as a number of, interestingly enough, what one would consider very liberal housing organizations that feel that this simply is not the right answer. I think it's also significant that both Los Angeles and San Francisco voted overwhelmingly, the Los Angeles City Council voted unanimously, and San Francisco voted 10-1 in opposition to this and to send the message to Sacramento that, no, we're not going for this. The reasons for this are many, but I think it really comes down to a phrase that we've been hearing a lot about lately, which is, no one is above the law, but this law effectively grants that status to a number of developers in the sense that it, under the state law, allows a developer to effectively override city zoning laws, override city's safety regulations that aren't codified into state law. It overrides city size restrictions, and it overrides setback requirements. So, in other words, developers can use this to their advantage to really, really do what they want and get around the needs of a city which best recognizes its own needs and the needs of its community. The obvious question is, well, who is supporting this? Well, the support comes from State Senator Weiner, who, interestingly enough, has received approximately 3/4 of $1 million in campaign contributions from the primary benefactors of this bill, who would be real estate developers, especially big real estate developers, real estate attorneys and firms, architects, and, and others in the building industry. So, again, just to sum up, I'm glad that both Vice Mayor Juan and Mayor Peers have, are looking at this with a, with a critical eye and keep going. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Hummer?
Hi, I'm Dan Hummer. I live in Stranahan, and I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this up, and I wasn't aware of it before. And I agree with opposing it. It is poorly written. I was just, just reading it, and it takes the control out of the local governments where I think it should still reside. We know what's best, I think, zoning-wise, what we should have in our facilities, you know, in our, in our cities, and the number of, you know, and how the land should be used and zoned and everything like that. So, I think the, the control should still be locally here, and maybe the state can, you know, you know, recommend that, you know, we do these things, but not pass a bill where it takes the control out of, out of the, the local governments. So, thank you for, for opposing it.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. We'll bring it back. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing that, we'll close the public comment on this item, bring it back here for discussion and consideration. Who wants to go first?
Well, certainly, the
Go ahead.
You know, this is, and I agree with both of our, our speakers, it's a rather poorly-written piece. The idea that this local control gets taken away, more and more by the state, gets taken away from us, is, is very difficult for me to swallow. And the unfairness of this bill with the carve-out counties, for instance, which is mentioned here, it, it's, it's a one-size-fits-all bill that they decide they're not going to fit it all into one size. And so, it really doesn't make much sense to me. I, I think the letter is, is pretty well-written. I appreciate Vice Mayor Juan taking the time to do this. I don't see, I like that the idea that the, the League of California Cities is opposing this with amendments or would oppose, with amendments.
Unless amended.
Unless amended. But I agree that at this point, we have such a small voice, and adding our voice to that, I think, is probably not enough. I think we should probably stand on our own here and, and oppose this altogether. I'm sad that this got out of committee. We'll see what happens when things go forward with it, and whether it will pass this time, I don't know. But the bottom line for us, I think, as a city, is to, is to take our own stand, as small as we are, and say, look, this one-size-fits-all is not going to be something that we're just going to keep rolling over for every time something comes out of the state.
Okay. Other comments? Toya?
So, I mean, I, I do think that the objective behind the bill is a good one, in a sense that we obviously all recognize that we have a housing crisis. We have a shortage of housing. We have a shortage of affordable housing. And that, but at the heart of it, we, there's also an imbalance between housing, transportation, and jobs, and specifically how those three are located. We should be building housing near jobs. We should be having jobs near transportation, and we should be having housing near transportation. It all, they all go together. And the further we separate them, the further the mess that we're in right now becomes as a state and as a region. You know, Clayton is pretty unique. It takes 20 to 40 minutes to get to a BART station, and then it takes another 40 minutes to get to downtown San Francisco. We have a bus connection, but it's rather minimal. And one of the big concerns of I have about this bill is that it defines, it essentially allows housing and certain waivers near high, was it, high-quality bus corridor, which is every 15 minutes, I believe.
During commute hours.
During commute hours. But, the problem with that, and I understand if it was tied to a ferry line or a rail line, because those are difficult to change, and those are fairly permanent, bus connections can be changed immediately. So, the idea of building a lot of housing near transit is great, but if the transit's not going to be there tomorrow or five years from now, you still have the housing there. So, I have a huge concern about that. And the other concern about, I have about the bill is the inequitable treatment of different sized, differently-sized cities. Why are the cities that are less than 50,000 residents, which we are, but we're located in a county with more than 600,000 residents, so we're not exempt? But, another city, primarily those in Marin, are exempt. That makes no sense.
Can we secede from our county?
Yeah.
There is a war about that.
So, I, I do have some concerns about the bill, the way in which it's written. At the same time, we are, we, we all recognize that we're in a housing crisis. We saw a state legislator last year that pushed out or introduced a record number of housing bills. A number of those passed. This is at the forefront, a lot of our state legislators. They are also elected officials, but they definitely have a problem that they need to solve one way or another. So, what I want to do is, I want to be effective. I don't want to just make a statement. And I don't want to make a statement that ends up being used against us. So, I'm very cautious of what statement we send out to Sacramento. If we send out, and there's two ways of opposing a bill, or there's multiple ways of us taking a position. We can oppose. We can oppose with amendments. We can support with suggested amendments, or we can support, or obviously you could take a neutral position, too. I would rather do what the League of California Cities is doing, which is oppose unless amended. I don't want us to become a target in just opposing and not having any role in fixing the housing crisis. I think we all recognize that Bay Area is not affordable. We're, all of us with kids or grandkids should be very concerned about how the next generations will afford to live in the Bay Area. And I think we all have some role in it. I don't think this bill gets there. I think it has very drastic consequences in taking away local control and having the one-size-fits-all. But I do think we need to do something. So, I would rather send a message to state politicians that we oppose it unless amended. That would be my recommendation on the position tonight.
Okay. Jim?
The only thing, I can't add anything to what's been said. I support what our constituents out here, the, our residents have stated, that this is the wrong bill at the wrong time. And I would concur with opposition unless amended.
Okay. I think we know. You want to add anything more? You want me to just throw it in?
Sure. I appreciate that when we oppose, we're trying to be strategic, in that sometimes you can get more if you don't piss everyone off. So, I guess I, I'm not really concerned if people in the state legislature know that we want them to just stop doing these things and to go home. I, I, I don't necessarily agree that we all think that we're in a housing crisis. I'm not sure. I, I think that the market is, I believe in markets. And if the housing costs are high, then that's just, that's how it is. And, you know, people, especially people in this community where we have such a high level of homeownership, house value is probably a big concern for a lot of folks. And I think that preserving home values is fairly important, and I think that's a worthwhile goal. So, whether or not we oppose or oppose, you know, unless amended, I would rather send the strongest possible message, because I, you know, they're not going to come beating down our door saying, hey, well, I see that you wanted amendments, so what do you think? I don't think that you get too many bites at the apple. And I would want to make as much of an impact as possible. I mean, when I, I write about some of this stuff, and I tag Senator Weiner directly, I'm like, look, dude, you're, what you're doing is terrible. You should stop. He's not going to listen, of course. He's not going to respond. But, I mean, if that makes you a target, well, so be it, I guess. I mean, I don't think it's going to make any substantive difference, but saying that you take a, on the range of approaches to take, if you take, if we elect to take a more tepid approach rather than one that is without, you know, without any reservations, I think it's less impactful. And so, for me, I would want to take as strong a position as possible, while still remaining respectful of the Senator's position. I don't want to like, you know, be derogatory or anything, but I just, I'm like, I don't like the bill, and I wish you would stop doing these bills.
Can I elaborate a little bit?
Go ahead.
So, what I meant by, I don't mean by taking a strong position. I just don't want to feed into the Senator's objective. His message in the state Senate, Senate is that cities are not doing enough. On their own, they can't do it. Let's take away their control. That's his message. That's what he's pushing for, and that's the message he's telling other state senators and other people in the legislature, that the cities can't do it on their own. So, when we send a message saying, we oppose, and we want nothing to do with this.
Negative.
I think we are, because I think it's exactly the type of thing that you cities will not do anything on your own if we trust it to you. I don't think we want that. I think all of us want to retain local control. And I think, I'm afraid that the message of just saying oppose and washing our hands off the housing issue is exactly what his, feeds into his story.
Yeah. I mean, didn't, at one of the meetings of, one of, I forget which meeting it was, one of the mayor's conference meetings, Senator Glazer came to one of the meetings, and he spoke about AB 1487 last year. And he, what he said was, give me, give me direction on how you want us to represent you. If you really oppose it, sometimes you've just got to take a stand and say no. Don't like, be wishy-washy about, oh, do this and that and this. And, but if ultimately, in, as a matter of principle, if you oppose this, then oppose it and give him the, give him the support that he needs so that he can go back to the Senate and say, my constituents have said no.
But, but the difference in that, what Senator Glazer said in that specific meeting was, don't send, don't take a vote that says, support with these amendments. Take a vote that says, oppose unless amended. That was the distinction. It wasn't between oppose and oppose unless amended. I know we're talking about
Yeah.
terms, but I think those are important terms. I think, and what, what the, what the mayor's conference did, it voted on that particular bill, oppose unless amended. And that's exactly what I think Senator Glazer wanted and asked for, and the mayor's conference gave to him.
No, no, you're right. That is true. I would just keep going, going.
Okay. Well, I do believe there's a housing crisis. I have a family member who plans to move out of state because they'll never be able to afford a housing in California. It's just that simple. And that, that's a tough one. I know a lot of other friends who have, their children and their families have moved out of state because they can't afford to stay here. There are a lot of seniors that are leaving because they don't have different choices than a single-family home that they raised their family in. And they can't manage it, but there's no other choice. And because of the way that the tax laws work and everything else, it's, even if you downsize, you're not necessarily losing some of the cost of that property tax. It's pretty tricky how that works. So, I agree that we do have a housing crisis here. There are a myriad number of reasons for that, and it's not just the lack of cities willing to approve projects. That's certainly part of it. Part of it is that the cost of building is so incredibly high because we don't have enough skilled labor. We don't have enough people to actually do the building that needs to be done for the parcels that are actually already zoned for that building. We have zoned to meet our RENA objective, but until recently, there wasn't anybody that came forward to even try to meet that. Now, my concern with this bill, and I have talked with Senator Weiner about this many times, and we have agreed to disagree, because I do believe that the changes that are made in this version are worse than the original. The carve-out of, in the Bay Area, the four northern counties, I think is absolutely unforgivable. I think it's absolutely wrong for regional planning, and have said so at the Association of Bay Area Governments. I'm sure we'll be talking about it again this next week. I do think that, Jeff, you've raised some really good points in this letter. I'm not sure it raises enough of the problems.
It's been one page.
Well, I, I know, and I think the one page is really good. And so, but I'm also sensitive to what Toya is mentioning, and I think perhaps, please oppose unless amended to clarify the issues above and the concerns raised by the California League of Cities. That kind of spreads it out for all of those other things that have been noted by so many folks around the state. I, I will tell you that at ABAG, I'm voting against this bill, and I try really hard to see both sides of any of these issues. I can't fix this bill, personally. I cannot find a way to fix it with all the stuff that's in it unless he just guts it. And he's not going to do that.
Yeah, I mean, like, one of the items that I highlighted, I tried to highlight some key items in the letter.
You did.
Understood critical terms, which you mentioned. I guess, in my, in my view, even if the terms were well-defined.
Well, it depends on how they're defined.
No, it doesn't matter how they're defined. I just think, even if you define it in such a way that's very clear and objective, I don't agree with the goal of the bill at all. So, the lack of definition is bad for the bill because it's bad policy, but the goal of the bill is bad, so that's also bad policy. And so, that's why I, I'm probably in a different spot, in a different place than you on that, and it's fine.
We're still both opposed.
That is, that's true.
To the bill the way it is. It's absolutely opposed.
And I think, as you mentioned with carve-out counties, I was just trying to be as succinct as possible, you know, carve-outs for counties to secure votes is poor public policy. I mean, essentially, carving out Marin County so that Marin will vote, the senators from Marin will not vote against it.
But it's not just Marin. It's Marin, Sonoma, Napa, Solano, all four of those counties, which could be high-growth areas. which could be high-growth areas with potential for new jobs.
And has historically resisted.
Actually, Solano has built like crazy.
Well, not Solano. I'm talking further north, but, yeah. And so, yeah, and so, I think, I don't, I didn't hear anyone that said that they liked the bill. It's just a question of how we.
No, I mean, I think all of us expressed that we're opposed to the bill the way it's written. I think it's a question of what type of statement we send with the letter.
So, did you, I didn't know, I didn't hear you, if you said that, oh, yeah, you did. You mentioned that you wanted to take the.
To address at least these concerns and the others raised, but, and they're not going to. He's not going to make those changes. So, my opinion is, it's still opposed.
The suggested letter that California League of Cities, which was oppose unless amended, it was actually pretty detailed, so I like the idea of referencing what the league is saying.
It was also very long.
It was very long.
But including a reference.
Maybe we include that.
I think a reference is good. I like that, I guess, one of the things that I thought would be, I find it more impactful if you don't get a boilerplate letter that the league provides to people to fill in the blanks. If we write our own, then it kind of stands out a little bit.
It does.
You do a one-pager, it's easier to read.
That's why I think the suggestion to include a reference to what the league provided.
It's fine.
Is a good one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, actually wasn't out when I wrote this.
Yeah, no, this came out today.
Yeah, it just came out.
Yeah.
So, yeah?
You know, we're the, we're the mouse to the elephant here, and so, where do we make?
But there are a lot of other mice. We can make that elephant really angry.
Well, then, we need to have the California League of Mice Cities, because at this point, we're, we need to, I think we need to shout a bit, to say that, you know, you can't keep, the state can't keep putting these one-size-fits-all bills on the size of a city that's our size. It just, it just doesn't work. So, that's where I'm at with it.
I would, I would take the strongest possible position that you would agree to.
So, if we, if we can, yes, if we can add, if we can add what we need to it as a compromise, I'm fine with that, too.
Yeah, make reference to the league letter, adjust to say, oppose unless amended.
That would be my suggestion.
That's fine.
I think that works. It shows we've paid attention to all of the issues, not just these, and these are really important. The one that sticks in my craw is the four-plexes in every single-family zoning. I mean, that one just makes me absolutely crazy. You know, a granny unit is, is one thing, but a four-plex is different. Is a totally different animal, especially if it's, you have to require the owner to live there. But a four-unit apartment complex on every single-family lot just makes me nuts. So.
And they could tear down a house and put a four-plex. I mean, it's crazy.
And yet, none of them have to be affordable either.
No, no. So, okay. Go ahead.
So, unless there's any other comments, I'll make a motion to approve that we, we send the letter with the recommend, with the modifications we discussed, which is to include a reference to the League of Cities, obviously change the recipients to be to the Rules Committee.
Yeah, Rules Committee.
And then, change the tone, sort of, this says, oppose unless amended.
At the bottom, I just have the one sentence, so I would definitely change that.
Right. And then, I would suggest that the vice mayor, since he's the author of the letter, work together with the mayor on the final version. Since it's a council letter, I assume it's for the mayor who signs it, or is it the city manager who signs it? But either way, I'd suggest that.
We would sign it.
Vice mayor and the mayor work together on the final version with those edits.
We're the policymakers, so we'll sign it.
I can get you a draft tonight.
You don't need to do it tonight. But, yes, the sooner that we do that, the better. I do think we need to, and you have copied here, our local legislators.
Very soon.
I wonder if we need to broaden that to the, more of the Bay Area delegation, or at least the East Bay.
I would say, send it to everyone.
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
I mean, ink's cheap. We could email it.
Yeah, it's emailed. So, okay, so, we do have a motion on the floor.
I will second it.
Okay, second by Diaz. So, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. That carries unanimously. Thank you all. Good discussion. All righty, and somewhere on here, I buried my agenda. All right, next item on the agenda, item nine, is limited to council requests and directives for future meetings. So, any agenda item someone wants to add to a future meeting? I think our meeting of February fourth is going to be a single topic, so we won't be adding anything to that one besides what's already scheduled for that meeting.
I don't know if it's a council item, but I would like to, as the newly-minted representative to the TLC, and with the resignations that we accepted tonight, I would like to have a discussion about the roles and responsibilities of the TLC. And I know that we had this at council prior to our joining, back in January of 2018, there was a discussion of the same nature. But I would like to revisit to see if we still feel, one, if that's appropriate, and, two, if it comports with the original understanding of the role of the TLC. I think at the time of adoption in ninety-seven, there were some tasks or roles or responsibilities that were delineated, and when it re-upped in 2007, it seems like it said, we're going to keep doing the same thing that we did before, and then it re-upped in 2017 or 2016, I think. It also said, we're going to keep doing what we did before. So, really, the original authoritative document on what the voters passed was way back when. And I think at one of the previous meetings, we discussed it and had our interpretation. But I want to have a discussion about whether those two things are aligned, and whether we think that is the direction we should go.
Okay. I think we can do that. I mean, we're not having people beat down our doors with the applications at this point.
We currently have two members. I don't know what the quorum is. There's eleven available members. A quorum is?
Three.
Three?
Yeah. We can have up to.
Up to eleven. Three is a quorum.
I would make just a comment of thanks to those who have served, and comment for the record that some of the folks who resigned this time have served multiple times in the past, and, and so, it's not like they served for a year and quit. They've been there before. They've put in their time. And I know personally that several of them have had health issues or family issues over the past year. So, you know, they were really wonderful about giving us their time. There are only three, maybe at the most, four meetings per year, and that really is oversight of the budget. It's, it's not dreaming up pie-in-the-sky projects, because we don't have the money for that kind of thing. So, I think it's fairly open to having a discussion, if only to understand what it really is meant to do, the way it was put together in the legislation that we passed.
And just to clarify for the record, I want to make sure people are aware, because I know there's been some correspondence to the council. Three members' terms were up at the end of December. They did not resign. They chose not to reapply. And two of those, as the mayor has mentioned, had previously served multiple terms in the past. So, we had three members who declined to reapply, which was an offering to them, and one that resigned, only one that resigned midterm, and he had previously served several times in the past.
However, I will, I will say that I did meet with one of them that did resign and would have re-upped had it been a different situation. So, I think, I think it's a warranted discussion.
Sure. We can do that. We can do that. Okay.
One more quick thing, giving the technology of the day here. I'd like to find, I know we've already had this discussion, but where are we on the 5G situation? Because I know they came in and gave us a presentation. I've heard nothing else since.
Well, we adopted, we adopted the guidelines.
The guidelines, but, and so, where are we?
It's up to private industry.
That's it?
Yeah. I don't expect anything more than that for quite some time.
I see the commercials, though.
Yeah. T-Mobile, 5G everywhere.
Yeah, well, everywhere they want to go.
Except in the.
Everywhere they want to install it. Don't, don't hold your breath for that one. Okay, if there are no other items for future agendas, we have no closed session, so we are adjourned to our February fourth meeting. We'll see you all there.
Thank you.